I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Want to thank everybody for attending today. First item on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes from the July second meeting.
I'd move to approve the minutes. Second?
We have a motion, we have a second to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Approval of the agenda, any additions to the agenda?
Move to approve unless you need it.
You want to adjust it for the time? We'll, we'll just follow in order. Yeah, move to approve. Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Alright. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. First item up on the agenda is the twenty twenty-five budget discussions and we'll open up with County Recorder Beverly Buckmeyer. Beth, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
I believe Candy sent out my sheet of my budget along with a kind of an introduction of what we actually do in our office. I did adjust my budget down a little bit. I did take off travel expenses a little bit. The last couple of years, travel expenses in my office has only been around twelve hundred dollars. If you look at my, right up I did. I have been appointed the treasurer for our North Dakota County Recorders Association. That's a state office. So I will have a little bit of travel more this year. So that's why I only pulled a thousand dollars off the budget. Everything else is fairly close. Technology, I kept the same. Service agreements, I went up about five hundred dollars. Tyler Technologies is increasing their fee at five percent. Also, our underground vault services, they are increasing their fee three point four or five percent for twenty twenty-five. Office supplies, I increased it about two hundred dollars just because of the increases in the cost of the supplies. I try to keep that very close. And miscellaneous, I kept the same. For the Endrin contract, the imaging indexing contract. When I calculated out what documents we'll have left towards the end of this, at the end of this year's contract, we're going to have around between seventy-four and seventy-five thousand documents yet to index. At the price I've got with the independent contractor we have now, she would do twenty twenty-five's contract at seventy-five cents a document, twenty twenty-six at eighty-five cents a document. We could probably get the whole project completed in two years if we went to thirty thousand dollars each year. This is a project that was actually started in two thousand twelve. The first two thousand twelve to twenty twenty-three, the budget for the project came out of the Endrin account. With that, with everything that's been done up to twenty twenty-three, it was close to a hundred thousand dollars its cost, the Endrin budget. The Endrin budget is set by the North Dakota Century Code. That can only be used for document preservation. There is a small percentage of kickback from the Endrin websites that does go to the county. It's around forty, between forty-five and five thousand dollars a year that goes back to the county. As of right, as of the end of June, we've spent thirteen thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars and fifty cents on indexing. Of that, there's only about five thousand dollars that's been spent of the twenty-five thousand that was allocated, and that was from twenty twenty-three. That's the only thing I have unless there's questions.
So this, this underground vault, that's somewhere else?
It's in Kansas.
It's in Kansas.
That's where they keep microfiche copies of all the documents. That I actually pulled out of last year and the last year before. I actually pulled out the fee for that out of the Endrin fund also. Any other questions?
Anything else for Beth? Do you have anything else for us?
Not that I can think of. It'd be nice to get the indexing project done. It'll be, we don't finish it until twenty twenty-six. It's been ongoing since two thousand twelve. That way, all of our documents are completely in the computer system. So if something would happen, we'd actually have them in the computer.
So you didn't ask for this thirty thousand?
Um, I, I asked for it on the second page of the budget. I think it's on there for thirty thousand. Yeah, the two double oh nine, twenty-nine oh one oh one expenses.
Yeah, the Endrin is a separate.
It's a separate account?
Yep.
And there's money in that account to do it?
Um, somewhat. We don't have the twenty-five thousand on, so far this year, the income for through the end of June, I've had an income of twelve thousand four hundred sixty dollars and eighty cents through the Endrin account. But the, we have been paying for the indexing out of that. What was in the account in the Endrin account paid up until the end of September for the indexing, and then we had to utilize some of the twenty-five thousand dollars from last year. So it was like around five thousand dollars the county ended up kicking in to do the indexing. This year so far, it hasn't kicked in yet, the twenty-five thousand. I haven't touched the twenty-five thousand yet.
But you, you will before.
I will. Yes, I'll have to before the contract is up.
But you'll have money left over to take to the next year for that then?
We don't, I don't, yeah, we can't really carry it over. It's always part of it. We gotta request it every year. Guess I do. We can get.
But I think what Lee's getting at is this thirty thousand or it was twenty-five thousand dollars there from last year if we would have just put it that forward, really.
Does that go to that miscellaneous general fund then if it's left over?
Not that account, no. And the Endrin, no.
No. It just stays there, right?
It stays there.
So, I mean.
So the twenty-five thousand, if she only used five of it, there'd still be twenty there going forward.
But she has to ask for.
Right, that's, that's okay. So, I mean, it could be forty thousand dollars at your disposal if you don't end up getting as far as you think you're gonna get.
Correct. If, if I couldn't get the independent contractor to sign the contract, have to go someplace else, it'd be a lot more expensive.
Yeah, gotcha.
Like I said, the second year, if we can do it in twenty twenty-six, it'd be less the second year because we might have almost over half of those seventy-five thousand documents done this year.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Beth. Lake Region District Health, you're done? Welcome.
There, sorry. Does anybody have any questions about the budget?
Commissioner Volk, you're on this board. Did you have anything that you?
No, we discussed everything last night. The biggest thing was not hiring the age position otherwise. They're within the, the five mils. And that was, that was the biggest discussion we had. It's to stay under that five mils as much as possible, just in case they were gonna lose a grant. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that's, that was pretty much the discussion to try to, and it was four point six five, or four point six seven after. That was taken in consideration that if property went down, yeah.
I know two out of the four counties are projecting for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, the land values are gonna go down. And it's not that the land values are going down. They said it's something to stay within state guidelines or.
Well, to stay at that ninety-three percent. They, they weren't gonna go above that. They were just gonna try to stay there, try to give some relief. So, that's why.
Yeah, because I think they were above the threshold.
Yes, correct. And that's why the discussion was to make sure we were well under that. Five mils.
Yeah, cuz with the health unit, the five mils froze.
Any questions for Mr. Heisler? Any questions for us?
No, thank you.
Thank you so much. Sheriff Lang. Welcome.
Hi, for my twenty-eight, twenty-five budget, I also sent a printout of what comes out of some of these accounts and where we're at. As far as the salary, I listed everybody's salary. I just numbered the deputies. It was an open position. As you can see that I put down for some of them, the three percent COLA in the step, and there's a handful of them that won't get the step. They'll be going into a review process. Some is because one's on probation yet, and two of them are headed into new positions and they want to be evaluated before we give them a step. And it also is based off some of their performance. But other than that, everything stays the three percent, the COLA and the step increase. So if you go on to the special deputy, five thousand, that's gonna stay the same. The drug task force, that went up seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one and forty-nine cents, and that's just basically an adjustment of pay for the two task force agents we got over there. Overtime budget, it stayed the same at fifteen thousand. Already went through the captain. The insurance, we went to thirty-four thousand five hundred, and that's up fifteen hundred. And that's based off of what we've paid in so far and our projections at the end of the year. The rent at the LEC is gonna go up, so that got raised up four thousand dollars to cover our rent at the LEC. Travel at five thousand remained the same. And then the travel, that's just for our conference per deal, to go to trainings or, or if we have to pick somebody up out of state. Our technology, we left that the same. We're looking at maybe purchasing a couple more computers for the task force agents because they're, they're running the old, old tough books yet. We're revamping our evidence collection and tracking, cuz as of right now, we still don't have anything, and we're trying to improve our Jana custody. The NOR, or the DOCR expense stayed the same. It's six hundred. Go on to the radios. I was able to reduce that by twenty thousand. We've pretty much got all the in-car radios. We need another portable. We need a new base station. And there's some antennas and other things that need to be fixed with the radios, and that should be, we should be able to cover it with the sixty-two thousand. Office supplies stayed the same at five thousand. Equipment and supplies, some of the bigger, bigger ticket items were, have been taken care of, so I was able to drop that to five thousand. But we still got, I made a list of, you can see some of the stuff we still have to buy or purchase, and what kind of comes out of there is when we start replacing in-car cameras, our bulletproof vests, outfitting our new vehicles when they come in, which the cost to them has gone up. They're charging us about twelve thousand a car to outfit them. So go down to uniforms. We pretty much got everybody close to outfitted after last year, so I've been able to drop that down two thousand to eight thou, or from ten thousand to eight thousand. And then we go into special operations, which is our canine. That fifteen thousand covers the six thousand dollars of his overtime for taking care of the dog. And this, the rest is gonna be for food, vet bills, training supplies and equipment. The one thing I didn't have in here is his cost for recertification. The vehicle expense is gonna remain the same at ninety-eight thousand, based on our percentage right now, what we spent. It's gonna be close, but I think, I think we'll be alright. We put in for capital outlay of a hundred and sixty thousand, and that's for three vehicles. And the issue we got is we got two of them well over a hundred thousand. We got two that are about ninety-five thousand, and one of them's really starting to cost us a lot of money just to keep it on the road. And it'd be, I think it'd be beneficial to retire the car.
So the capital outlay and the vehicle expense are two different things? Vehicle expenses basically like the gas and stuff?
The gas, the oil, the maintenance. And the miscellaneous, we still, we say, stayed at forty-five thousand, and that's covering, some of the things it covers is tuition and the training, some of the organizations that we belong to, M O C I C, which is an organization where we can actually borrow equipment from for surveillance and et cetera. And it's kind of our catch-all. We don't got a true line item for it. So with that being said, I was able to reduce my budget by fifty-four thousand fifty-two and twenty-two cents, which is a three percent reduction. I tried to get it down to that five percent, and I think by getting into the five percent, I would be running short somewhere. Let me, I'll find.
Fifty-four thousand fifty-two twenty-two.
So that's my budget. If there's any questions?
And your budget still holds a captain for the last season?
That's correct. There's been no decision on that, so I, I kept him in there.
Does anybody have anything for Sheriff Lang? So when you talk about these reviews, the number you have in your list here, is that with the step pending the reviews or is that in addition? That'll be the maximum, won't you?
Right, right. And that's just like the open position. That's the maximum amount. It could be a lot less, depending on the experience.
Anything else for Sheriff Lang? Sure, if anything else for us?
Not today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Elizabeth? Welcome.
This is Ann?
Yep.
There were just three changes that I have in the budget. The first was the salaries were updated as proposed. There is an increase under the IT, technology, which in our office is under the IT, GIS and Recorders. Office is where I get those numbers. We, she, cost share, recorder software, and then I receive from the IT, GIS department what my portion of different software in that, I pay for that. Other than that, I decreased our miscellaneous fund. I just rounded it to the nearest one thousand. And so overall, it should be down. I did take a look, my folder here just goes back to two thousand seventeen. So I grabbed two thousand seventeen, and since that time, all of the line items like travel and registration or office supplies, et cetera, that I kind of have a little bit of direct control over, have either decreased or stayed the same. So I haven't made any major changes in any of those over the years.
Did we add anything in your budget for vehicle maintenance?
Uh, no, I usually keep that under kind of our travel and registration. With the current vehicle, we haven't had the maintenance costs as we had in the past. So we've had some free oil change and, and that kind of thing going on with that, but that's usually where we take it out of.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Beth?
I do not.
Looks very good.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Singer, welcome.
And Commissioners. Okay, my budget's pretty simple, I guess. Got the wages on top with the step plus the COLA. As I hear Sheriff Lang here really probably had a substantial cut of three percent. The travel expenses were basically related to two conferences and a safety, a one-day safety conference or meeting I go to. I would like just to cut the twelve hundred down to, cut four hundred dollars off of it and get one of those conferences off, so.
Make that to eight hundred?
Yeah. The technology is all set in stone. Those are fees that are, that are paid for our software, so seven thirteen seventy. Office supplies, three hundred dollars, and then cutting one of those conferences out would bring the miscellaneous employee training down actually to four hundred also, so. Any questions?
Pretty simple.
Can we make your technology like seven twenty or seven twenty-five?
Oh, sure, round it up. Seven fifteen, seven twenty.
Thirteen seventy.
That's what I got for the, for the sheets, so.
I know, thank you.
Great. If nobody has any questions, there's a couple of quick things, just a back-of-your-mind, front burner. This is related to the Sheriff's Department, but as you know, there's some changes coming with, with Andy Perz, the pension, and going to more of a traditional 401K with new hires starting January first, twenty twenty-five. There is an opportunity for the safety position, the Sheriff's position, that we can move them into another Perz retirement, very similar to what we do now, other than it's, it's a little more friendlier to our sheriff deputies and anybody in that department with the exception of the office manager, I guess. Where the share is different. Instead of seven percent employee, it would be a five percent. And instead of the nine point two six percent employer, it goes up fifteen point two six? My, I don't have the numbers in front of me. But I do have a number that to think about. Obviously, that'll increase the benefit line item for the Sheriff's Department, and my es, my best estimate would, it would increase that benefit for our Sheriff's Department, about twenty-five thousand dollars. It would be a good recruiting tool. We talked about that in a couple of different aspects. They also will receive the the healthcare portion of the pension when they retire, where there's an assistance of money that will come to the retired deputy sheriff or whatever. And that'll go towards any of their supplemental insurances after retirement, so it's something to think about right now. I guess I'm not officially proposing that, but now that is something we probably need to look at. The change could happen now mid-year or we can wait until, you know, making this a change on January twenty twenty-five. But it's something, obviously, that comes down to the commission to decide.
So when you're talking this traditional, that's gonna be offered to all the departments with the new people?
The one I just talked about with the Sheriff's Department? Well, the traditional. So any new hires starting January twenty twenty-five will now be participating in a mandatory, like a 401K with some kind of an employee match, employer match.
That's a total different thing for the sheriff.
Yep. So when we hire a, a new deputy, January first or after January first, twenty twenty-five, this will be, this will be their retirement. You know, they'll stay in a, in more of a traditional pension that we have now, so.
Still changing this over just for the current employees that are employed as of before December thirty-first, basically.
Right. And then if we change it now, but if we, this will be what would be offered as a benefit to those, that Sheriff's Department, to those deputies and any people, any persons that would fall under their category. any people, any persons that would fall under their category. Some people don't realize about Andy PERS, they have six or seven different types of retirements. I mean, there's for the, you know, the safety, you know, the Sheriff's Departments, those types of places. There's our traditional main that we're in. There's a four fifty-seven. I mean, there's, they have a number of different ones. There's a four oh one A that employers can have their employees go into. So they have, there's a handful of different retirement options that they have, so. I don't know if anybody has any more questions on that, but that would be something that would be, would need to be approved obviously by the commission and we have to write a resolution and send it to Andy PERS and have the chairman, maybe even the auditor signs off. I can't remember the process, but. The, the current deputies will be, they get credit for the service they already have when they move over to the new plan, which is good, or when they retire, so they get credit for time served, I guess.
Do you know Sheriff Lang, is that included in next year's budget or?
No, he said that it would go up twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand.
And how is that budgeted, Candy? I guess I don't, on that backend, how you line item that or whatever.
That's out of one of the budgets that I do.
Good.
All right, will be.
And we'd have to separate that out then from the rest of the employees?
Right. The reporting is when we report it, the earnings and all those things, it's actually reported right along with all the rest of us, but.
If, if we went with that, you're gonna have that one, you would have what the current people are on and then the traditional.
Yeah. Right. And what, what makes it complicated a little bit right now is, um, this was gonna be my real next topic conversation is, is payroll. You have different, you're gonna have different deductions for different people. And right now, I've heard, I mean, I haven't reached out to them, our current payroll system, JD, GDP. They, it doesn't sound like they want to make those changes within their payroll system because we're literally just about done with them, so they don't want to put the effort into that, so that, and I haven't confirmed that. I just heard that through somebody at Andy PERS that they'd reached out to them.
Basically something we'll have to put the pencil to.
Right, yeah. It's probably doable. It's just, it's little, it would be over my head technology wise, but it's probably doable. And I do think the, the, the pension for the deputies, I think that is in that system somehow right now from what I can tell with some of the buttons to click or whatever, but, because it doesn't, Candy, we're not sure yet, but it doesn't look like we're gonna be done with our current payroll system until probably early next year in the Tyler technologies, so. So there's gonna be that little challenge of changeover. Yes. Another one. So yeah, so that's something we need to chew onto as we make that transition with all this Andy PERS stuff that's happening, so. And I could forward all the commissioners too. There's, they have a nice little worksheet graph or whatever from Andy PERS that shows, you know, here's the advantages and disadvantages of moving those deputies in that safety plan. Any other questions?
Anything else for Brian?
Thank you.
Lisa.
Hi.
Welcome.
How are you?
Great.
Good. I'm good. Um, which one did you want to start with?
Uh, let's go to page five is. Treasurers.
Treasurers. I left the part-time salary in, the same. Travels, yeah, everything is about the same. Office cap, capital outlay, I did go up a little bit because Steve has kind of projected that that was gonna be a little bit higher. So it's not a whole lot. And it do show a minus right now because we had to, we billed something and then sent it back. And I guess I did go five percent on the wages. We've taken on more duties. We've taken on primary residence credit. We've had a lot of work with that. Yes or no, I, I know what you guys have put in for, what was it, three? But the more credit, the more work we have to do across the counter, I guess like the homestead credits this year were a lot. So I mean, that's what I was putting in for. And of course, I'm off the step because of my years of service. But I did put that in for Jackie too because she's doing more duties too. Any questions?
Questions for Lisa on her treasurer's budget?
And we are, just to give a little, we are pulling a little bit over five percent on those ICS. Minnesota bonds are doing okay when they come due. I've been taking them out and putting them in that, I, that sweep account because we're making more money off of that. We're making pretty good money still off the COVID money. Brem, I'm not Bremor, First United Bank has given us a pretty good interest rate on that. So working with all of them, I think the interest is pretty good.
Next one would be.
Superintendent of Schools.
Page nine.
Um, I did put in a little bit more on that for travel. Hopefully we can get everything settled. Right now we are Attorney General and doesn't like what Edmore has projected out there of giving the money to the community club. It's a holdup right now. I've talked to Jody again today. They don't have a meeting the next two months. Hopefully September, October, November, but if not, we're back into the first of the year. And hopefully we can make an agreement or hopefully they can make an agreement. We do have, and I have, we did have some property that was missed. We're gonna have to do an adjustment. Hopefully that will be okay too. With something with DPI and when they gave the school district to, when Cavalier gave the school district to DPI or whatever, I don't know who's gonna take the fold for it. Doesn't matter at this time, but we have about thirteen quarters that were missed. We're gonna have to do an adjustment for them. I don't know if that's gonna be a problem or not.
An adjustment on there.
On where, and where those quarters are gonna go, because they showed they were in Munich and they were actually supposed to be in Edmore. You know, they were Edmore's property, school district property, but they were showing in Munich, so it never got picked up on the mapping. I don't know whose fault it is. It's nobody's fault. It's just, you know, yeah.
So what's the difference between the school mills for each district is?
Right, and of course, you know, is Parker ever gonna want more or is, you know, there's always that adjustment to do. But maybe we can, it'll be okay too.
They're thinking that's gonna run in twenty-four or twenty-five.
Um, you know, that I don't know. If we can get it settled before, that'll be fine, but I put in another ten thousand dollars for the contract because I don't know. And miscellaneous, I mean, everything else is about the same. And like I said, if we don't use it, it's gonna go, it goes back to the county and the general anyway, but unless you guys don't think we need it.
It's hard to say.
Yeah, I don't think you wanna.
I mean, we've only used.
Something when you're dealing with the state. It'll end up being more than the ten thousand that you appropriated in the first place, I'm sure.
Well, and if we know something before the October budget, there's.
We could take it out.
Take it out.
Right.
So explain, just for trying to wrap my mind around it. The Attorney General doesn't like how they're distributing the leftover funds after the closure.
Correct. The Edmore School has decided to give the community club a large amount. And the Attorney General is kind of fighting that process. So it's been Attorney General and the attorney from the Edmore School that are trying to work it out. You know, I don't, I don't know what they've.
Right.
And Jody doesn't know much either until it gets settled. But Edmore School District was a pretty big area too. And everybody wants a piece of the pie, of course, because it's all that money generating money. And as far as where the kids are gonna go, you know, that is still kind of up in the air. I mean, they have their choice. At first we, they gave us where they wanted to go, but now some of them have decided to do different. There was one that mom or dad's gonna go work in Lakota, so instead of going somewhere else, he's going with them to Lakota. I don't think Starkweather's getting any now.
I've heard yes and no, pretty much back and forth at every meeting since.
I just talked to Julie Wash, she was in and she didn't know if they were getting any, so.
See, I think that's just a wrong way to look at it, but that's, and for people that are on a different, because of the transient nature of humans, they could say they're gonna be in one school district today and choose another one tomorrow. You know, so I think that's a, not a very good way for DPI for the state to take a look at that. But that's not for, that's where the guys in Bismarck to make that law change, so.
So what, you know, so I did put the ten thousand in there. You guys can decide if, you know, we didn't use it all last year, but it might be done by the end, but we can decide on that. And Jody is very helpful. She's very good at what she does. I don't think we could have did it without her. I mean, there's a lot to it.
Lisa, did you talk to your, the Port Farnoel Commissioner about the going five percent instead of the three percent in the COLA?
No. I took it upon myself.
Just wondering, I mean, if every.
Be honest. I'm gonna be honest with you. I took it upon myself. No, I didn't talk about.
What we needed to know.
But I just felt like we were off the map, like years of service. I don't know.
Other questions for Lisa? Lisa, anything else for us?
I don't think so. Not that I know of. We're keeping busy. There's always something to do. Now we're doing the, I don't know if you guys are aware, primary residence credit. If you applied for it on one side of where you had a house and you bought it in another house, you can do a transfer. It's another thing off there.
And that was a state deal.
That's a state deal. And they're having some trouble with trust accounts. If you have a trust account, you won't be awarded the five hundred credit. I brought it to Kathy Frelick. She looked into it. Tax Commissioner's looking into it, because it's really not fair to those individuals. It's a primary for them. They should be able to claim it, so they're gonna take that off the legislator, legislations again.
I'm sure people appreciate your above and beyond.
Well, I mean, it's, it's not fair to, and it's, you know, our elderly people that have it probably in a trust. Yeah, there's, they should be get that credit.
Unfortunately, that's not for us to decide, but.
Exactly. But we have to try and help them out at the same time. Anything else?
I have nothing. Anybody else have questions for Lisa? Thank you.
Thank you. Yep.
Star?
Hello.
How are you?
I have new papers for you on Friday afternoon. We got our health insurance quote, so I hurried up Monday and revamped our budget. Instead of twelve percent on the health insurance, it's only seven point three two percent. So I am going to start with nine one one. In the nine one one budget, I'll just highlight a few things. There are AppCo EMD card sets and an EMD interface with CAD. The card sets are thirty-six thousand dollars. The CAD interface is ten thousand dollars. The state cards that we have currently will not be supported. So we have to go to a new emergency medical dispatch card set. There is also a phone radio recorder that is forty-five thousand dollars. One chair, two thousand dollars. The technology fund at twenty thousand dollars and a four percent cost of living and then the seven point three two percent insurance costs.
What's the percentages on the side?
That is the increase from last year. And you guys are really. They weren't so friendly at my last one, that I was at, the last meeting I was at. Are there any questions about the nine one one side?
And just to remind Commissioners that the LEC Board hasn't approved these preliminary numbers yet, so we meet tomorrow and.
They approved me to take out the last numbers.
Right.
At the last meeting.
Yep.
But they haven't seen these numbers.
I can't see why we would not tomorrow, but. Based on final approval. Based on final approval.
Right. I will do the. R R C next. The R R C has. A few things in it. We need to replace the flooring. Over there, I don't think it's been replaced since it was built. And that is fifty five thousand dollars. A vehicle for fifteen thousand dollars. We removed one staff position. But the B O P is requiring us to add an employment specialist. Um, we increased the daily rate over there. To eighty dollars a day. And then it's the four percent cost of living and the seven point three two insurance. We are a male facility now, all male. And we are in discussion with the B O P to increase their daily rate.
So we're, we're talking reentry, right?
Correct. And we are also in discussion with the D O C R who wants to come back into the facility.
Is this an air or am I looking at this right? You got five forty nine for. Twenty twenty four and the initial is seven forty seven for. Twenty twenty five. Cause twenty two, twenty three, we're close to this number and then it dropped big time. Is that just? Because of the people that were there or?
D O C R.
D O C R, we, we cut out D O C R. And as you see, I put them back in.
I'm trying.
Questions on the residential reentry?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
Um, so twenty four seven program, yes, like the increase. So is that going to take care of the issue? That we've been having.
I, I also had the same question. What are those twenty four seven fees used for? Do you know?
That is in their budget, the. It's probably for purchasing of supplies.
Okay. The reas- reason we're asking is cause Peggy. Is wanting us to pick up some twenty four seven and some. G P S monitoring fees, but. I don't know if. We're really the right party to try and collect those from, so I wasn't sure if these. Dollars that were budgeted could pay that or if that's for something else.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Thank you, Star.
And I know that. Um, that is on our agenda for tomorrow at the board meeting. Okay, I'm good.
We'll ask the questions. Get that figured out. Anything else on residential reentry? Moving on to.
L E C. We don't really have any capital improvements. There's one. And that is replacement of two doors. Well, it's actually four doors. But it's the entrance at the police department and the employee entrance. The doors aren't closing, so sometimes it's secure, sometimes it's not secure. And that is uh, forty four thousand dollars. Um, there's chairs for the lounge for two thousand two hundred dollars, chairs for the courtroom. For six thousand six hundred dollars. Three guardian devices. The guardian is what we use now to do all of our rounds and tracking of inmates. Um, seven computers for nine thousand eight hundred dollars. A med cart. For five thousand dollars. One vehicle for fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, wrap restraint, which is a new form of the restraint chair. Um, there's four percent cost of living, seven point three two insurance. I do have the captain in my budget also. And there's uh, Peggy's, Peggy is going to part time, starting in January, so her. Salary was reduced to twenty hours a week and. We decreased her hourly rate.
I don't think he's. These numbers here, right?
Yeah, they're in, they're, they're in one of the.
They're all built in.
Yeah.
Not, not individually.
No.
Although vehicles on there for.
Yeah. You're just giving a scenario of.
But that's just an expense for, it's not a buying a new vehicle.
It would be bought purchasing a vehicle.
What?
Yeah. Our, our van, our maintenance people use is.
You, you're, you're buying a vehicle for fifteen thousand?
Uh, well, it would be a used vehicle.
Well. You, either that or I wanna buy your vehicles where you do.
Yeah, right?
Oh, okay.
Both the vehicles, the, the reentry center and the L E C, we would purchase used.
Used vehicles.
Used ve- used, but not. Are used.
And so we, and we have two. Budgets with a captain position in them. Should we work that out? Maybe tomorrow if we have some time.
Sure.
How about the four of us get together after the L E C meeting?
Okay.
Yourself and Sheriff Lang and. Captain. And I can maybe sit down and. Work that out.
Yep.
Okay, that worked for you, Sheriff? Okay. We'll see if we can make that happen. See where. The hangups can be. Questions on the L E C budget?
So just. Your guys' increase is three point three five percent from last year. I don't know if you noticed that, but.
Uh, three point three five from a really big number is still a.
It's still a really big number.
Overall, the grand total budget was six point five five percent increase.
Yep. And like I said, we left out any capital improvements. So.
Anybody have any questions? Have you communicated with the gentleman here that interested in the. Visitation to the. Indiana?
Talked about. Do you have a specific date? Twenty third and the sixth. Twenty third. Well, we had to split it. They couldn't do, they couldn't do. One, so I can see. Cause I had, well, I actually had somebody tell me that they couldn't go, so on the twenty third, so maybe I can just replace it.
We'll make sure we have that early tomorrow. When you agree, Jeff, for sure.
Okay.
Anything else? Star? Nothing for us? Anybody have any questions for Star?
Oh, hell no.
That's it, depends if he eats a late breakfast or.
And, and just for complete transparency, this is. Head for visitation of a facility in Indiana that. Building, architecture firm is. Transporting people to and from. So. Thank you, Star.
Mister Trell, can I take it to a minute?
Yeah.
Can you have a question? This, there's eighteen and then eighteen A. Where's eighteen at? Am I just? There's like two of them or? Oh, I got eighteen A. I had them together, I'm sorry. Well, A and B.
I didn't share this with you. I, I got some other images for you, Kevin.
Yeah.
That, that box culvert up there.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't have page numbers, you'll have to bear with me. Where we're headed.
Okay. Do the translate.
Hey, I'm messing up the book cause I couldn't figure out, I couldn't figure out my twenty eighth before eighteen. But I, we're on the same page.
So do we start with cemetery though?
That's eighteen.
Okay, perfect. Okay, the. Cemetery budget, I think the state allows us a certain. Mill, so that's what I went by, made it seventy six hundred. It's a little bit of a raise from last year, but. It's never enough to pay for the actual work we do there. We end up using county funds to. Finish what we do out there. Hurry dog fun. That's an act.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, what, I think we're gonna plan on using all that when we do our. The balance that's in there now, when we do our paving project, so it's gonna be at zero and we don't have a project for twenty twenty five, so. I also put down zero for twenty twenty five. And we should be getting money back in there at the end of the. State's budget. Or window buckets. It'd be just as easy if I followed your guys.
No, you're.
Okay, just continue.
Okay, the next one is the blacktop fund, uh, that's the one we do our. Farm to market roads with. Um, I have in there for. The twenty twenty two flood project. Finally did get the contracts for that, so they will be. Uh, they'll probably be getting billed next, or twenty twenty five for sure. Unless something crazy happens, so. I have uh, construction engineering for those and also to pay for the. The projects themselves. I have preliminary engineering for a thin leftover lay on Ramsey County Ford B, which would be. Like from Doug Friggy South to eight. And I also put in sixty five thousand for permanent, preliminary engineering for the Hagie Bridge. Not sure where that's going, but if we decide to do it, there's sixty five thousand for the preliminary engineering. Uh, that all adds up to one million eighty five thousand even. Any questions there? Okay, the next page I have is county road. Uh, salaries is what was. Uh, given on the chart for the three percent in step. This doesn't include uh, administrative, so myself and Brent are not in that total. Fixed charges is our uh, health insurance. That type of stuff for the wages. Um. I'm backwards. This does includes Brett and I on this county road budget. Doesn't include all the other guys. Right, right. Uh, I guess the, I thought the insurance would be more than that, so I did raise it up to seventy five thousand. Uh, capital outlay. This increased dramatically because it's got the uh. A new plow truck for three hundred and sixty thousand. And a new salt shed for three hundred thousand. And I also figured a. A disc that goes on front of the motor graders, they're ten thousand five hundred. For one of them, we're gonna, we wanna try just one. So that's where the eight hundred and forty thousand comes in.
Disc cuts it.
It's like a. Well, it has angles both directions.
Yep.
And then it just goes on front of the motor grader. There's no hydraulics or anything, the wheels turn themselves. Up and down, hydraulics. Uh, I've seen them, we're up in Nelson County using them, so, and they like them, they all like them.
It helps break the ground before you're.
It's like when they're pulling uh, windrows to their shoulders, when they're all at sod, then they run the disc over the sod and it really breaks it up nice.
So that'd be instead of the hair.
Yeah, cause. Yeah.
It's making it a lot fun quicker.
Yeah, exactly. The sod itself. The, the rake, we have rakes for all of them, but that's more for like hay season now when people are mowing or pitches. Kind of less aggressive type of stuff. Uh, next one, construction includes uh, graveling Ramsey County four A, which is way up north by the Ramsey County-Cavallar County line. And also Ramsey County nine A, just north of Starkweather, and then going east over to Hamden area. So those two are in there for gravel. Uh, we have twenty thousand for mag water. Twenty thousand for repairing soft spots. And fifty thousand for overlays, overlay patches. We'll have three culverts that we installed underneath asphalt roads this year, but we have to be doing overlay patches on it this year. And then the miscellaneous, I just threw in there ninety thousand, we always have projects that come up that we don't, we need to, one of them may be the preliminary engineering for the bike path. If that, if we get our grant for that, or if we just decide to go ahead and do it. There's not enough to do the project there, but we can get the engineering and fitting process going. So the total on that, uh, page is one million, three-hundred-and-eighty thousand, five forty-nine forty. And a lot of that increases the new plow truck and a new salt shed. Any questions there?
So that's, that new salt shed, that's something you wanted to go with instead of working with the city or?
Yep. I mean, there's small little quirky issues there, but we could make that work for a year or two if we had to.
Okay, just sort of.
Yep. I mean, if we wanted to wait some time to do that, we could. We are getting the pad ready this summer, just in case. Just with dirt and clay and stuff, nothing else.
And that'd be right out where you're at.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions? Next one is county bridge. I put in fifty thousand for culverts that we may need to buy to replace, uh, culverts that are rusted out, or maybe a bridge, I think we're pretty good as far as replacing bridges right now, but if something weird happens, why, there's fifty thousand for buying culverts, and twenty-five thousand for the construction part of putting those culverts in. Any questions there? Highway tax. This is their wages for the remainder of our workers, and this is according to the scale we were given. Uh, overtime, I did raise that up a little bit because of the, we're trying to do all of our own mowing now, instead of hiring summer help. The last time we hired summer help, it ended up costing more than if we would've just had our regular workers work a few hours to do it. It's hard to believe, but, I mean, you almost gotta watch over the, the summertime help where the full-time people know exactly where they're going, what they're doing, what they're using, what their trailers. The process goes faster. Uh, fixed charges, that is the, uh, uh, health benefits and that type of stuff. Unemployment, that's kept the same, we haven't used that, but every once in a while, if somebody tries to get unemployment from us, that's where we take that from. Insurance, that is for uh, electric, or vehicles and building insurance. Also drug testing comes out of there. Travel, I left that the same, um, we're still doing quite a bit of training that we have to go to other towns, normally it's not overnight, but it does include a new meal. Um, utilities, that's kind of self-explanatory, it's electricity, heat, phone, water, garbage. And that includes all the shops. There are all the outlying shops. Off supplies, uh, last year I had budgeted, budgeted for two computers, and this year we'll need one, so that reduced a little bit. Gas, oil, and fuel. Increases in fuel prices and gas prices is where that jump is from. Supplies, materials. This includes, um, quite a bit, scrabble, sand, riprap, cutting edges, snow blades, filters, tires, road oil, like Craxial road oil, uh, hot mix, cold mix, antifreeze and engine oil, uh, signs and signposts, and shop supplies and tools. That did go down just a little, not too significantly though. Next one is repairs and maintenance, that we're finding out that repairs are costing more than before. So I raised that up to forty thousand. Capital outlay. I have one, uh, three-quarter ton pickup in there for fifty-five thousand, and that's just thirty thousand for anything else, oh, for building maintenance, for like, we may have to put carpeting in the office next summer. It's twenty-eight years old or whatever. So the total on bottom is one million, five hundred and seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars and twenty-eight cents. Any questions there? Okay, next page is our chip seal program. And we'll be chip sealing Ramsey County eight, just east of Webster, those ten miles. And also all the block top roads, round devils like, like Ramsey one, Military Road, Walleye, uh, Walleye Drive, and the terminal road. That's a chip seal. And that also includes the chips and the striping. For seven-hundred-and-sixty dollars. In twenty-four, we did twenty miles, and then twenty-five, we'll be doing like eighteen and a half. So that's why it's down a little. Predicted a little bit of raise in oil, road oil prices. Right there. Any questions for that? Um, I also have the FEMA ones, I'm not sure what page we're tracking here on, but all the FEMA accounts, basically left them the same as last year, we never did use any of that money, but it's available if we have a emergency. I think that adds up, those FEMA accounts add up to four-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand five hundred. There's one, two, three, five years in there. I want the balance. Four-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, five hundred dollars, which again, isn't earmarked for anything, but it's available if we need it for anything.
And that's all, that's.
It's what's left over from the accounts, and it's basically all the admin money.
Okay.
There wasn't any gravel or anything, just admin, and they told us that we could use a per onto two if it's admin.
And that is actually from FEMA disaster.
Hmm, like in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, two thousand eleven.
Could we combine some of those?
We could combine all of it, we want to. And just call them, a lot of counties do, just have one leftover FEMA fund. And it's pretty discretionary, I mean, they don't care what you use it for. The admin part of it, if there was gravel or something like that left over, we would have to use it for that, but that's not the case here. And then also I have the twenty-twenty-two flood budget, and I just need the, the whatever balance is left in there, I don't, really don't even know what the balance was, I couldn't find out, but uh, hopefully we'll get most of that done this summer. I'm not sure what it's gonna be, you know, it depends on if the contractors can get done and what they can't get done. But that, we will be spending. That was from twenty-twenty-two. Any questions about FEMA? That's all I have. I didn't do a percentage of what I saved, of course, this is our odd year for doing projects, so right away, we lose the paving project, which is one to one and a half million dollars that we don't spend, but last year my budget was six million, sixty-five thousand and forty-six dollars. And this year it's four million, eight-hundred-and-eighty thousand, one thirty-nine, I never did do the percentage on that. Last year was six million, zero sixty-five, zero forty-six. That was all my budgets combined. Yep.
But that's because we're on a hot year.
Yes, it is, next year that'll change the other way. Yes, gotta keep that in mind, but we will, we should be getting the, uh, gopher money, prairie dog money, and maybe, maybe if the buckets fill and plus we'll have, we didn't use our federal eight dollars this year, we just, so we'll have whatever is in that account, we don't even know what that number is yet, so. But that's twenty-six. Any questions?
Me?
I did send along my, my line item breakdown, if, I don't know, did you send out those out, Kenny? Okay, so that explains where, looks like this. Explains all my line items were, it's two pages.
Yeah, the FEMA ones didn't.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, starting out with my agenda, projects, our chip seal project is done and sealed, they got the yellow lines painted. I'll have to come back and paint the white ones, uh, we can take our signs down by doing the yellow ones, so we took all the signs down. They still have to come back and do the white lines. Uh, culvert replacements, we ended up doing four, actual four actual sites, we've got, after today, we'll have three done, only one left. The other three were those ones that were, the water was almost too deep to do anything there. Um, we got the invoice for the chip seal project for more seal coat. Uh, it, it is four-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars and thirty-four cents. So I'd like to entertain a motion to pay more seal coat, even though it's the middle of the month there.
Motion to pay, second seal coat.
We have a motion, we have a s- second to go ahead and approve paying more seal coat. That total again was four eighty-three.
One fourteen, thirty-four.
Fourteen, thirty-four. Further discussion? Hearing non-rule call, please.
Otis.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Gessner.
Aye.
Willhomy.
Aye.
Griff.
Aye.
So that doesn't include the painting of the lines, that bill will become later, as a separate contractor. Uh, we got the four contracts from the state for repairing the twenty-twenty-two flood sites. Um, they, they required a signature from the chairman and the auditor. So I'd like to entertain a motion for the chairman and the auditor to sign the C E R P contracts.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and allow the chairman and auditor to sign the contracts with state DOT for the uh, FEMA funds, or is that correct?
No, these are.
These are.
Emergency relief.
Emergency relief funds. I knew I signed something. Hearing, uh, any further discretion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
So the next step there, K L J will have to put together contracts, a separate contract for each project. And then we'll, they'll present them to us and the state. And we'll have to sign that contract. And then they can start doing our survey and then, which should all, should happen pretty fast. After we drug our feet for three years, or somebody drug their feet.
Wasn't us.
No. And last thing I have is there's gonna be a pre-construction conference on Tuesdays, July twenty-third, for the thin lift overlay project on Ramsey County three. Uh, we have not set a time or a place yet, it'll be in town here, but, um, if anybody's interested, I can let you know. We're actually kind of boring, but you get to hear the, when they're gonna start, what their workdays will be and hours and that kind of stuff. So that's all I have.
That's for Ramsey three.
Thin lift overlay, yeah. July twenty-third, we don't have a time or place.
Okay. Anybody have anything else for Kevin? Kevin, anything else for us?
No.
I wanna thank you for, uh, coming in tonight. Thank you guys for, uh, work you're doing. Culvert project looked good. Let's see. Next item on their agenda. Standing committees for the North Dakota County Commissioner Association. Anybody wanna volunteer for any of those? Yes, I'd like to throw my name in the hat for the, um, volunteer to be on that legislative committee. I think it's gonna be a, a trying year. Think it's gonna be a, a trying year. And I think there's gonna be a lot to pay attention to.
You have a motion for that, Jeff? Just putting yourself on. I mean.
We, we could go ahead and.
I don't think, we probably don't need one of your volunteers.
I, I think it's a volunteer.
Yeah.
Type of position, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, I believe so. Cause it's one that you don't have to have, but.
Right. Anybody have any other? Committees that you'd like to be a part of? The audit committee nominating committee resolution is legislative. Have until Friday, July twenty-sixth to uh. Submit your names to any of those. Uh, next item on the agenda would be discussion on flood plan administration. I don't know if there's been any changes into that.
No, but we are meeting, our steering committee is meeting tomorrow morning at seven thirty.
Okay.
For the planning and zoning.
Okay.
I'm sure it'd be part of that discussion.
Sure. Okay. Do you recall what our total for that uh. Contract was to, for that engineering planning committee to come up with?
The whole project, I think we budgeted fifty thousand for this year, the whole project where it was a hundred thousand. Budget that for next year.
Yeah, okay. Two years. Curiosity, thank you. Any other unfinished business? Uh, new business approved, cancelled checks.
Moves approved.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second to approve the cancelled checks. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carries. Discussion on. I T G I S position. Um, I'm sure everybody's aware. Uh, Mr. Mo has submitted his resignation. He's accepted a position closer to his hometown in Minnesota. And uh. He'll be done, I believe, August second. Is when he plans on leaving and a couple. Really big roles that he plays within the county. And. So we had a meeting with the I T consultant. Candy and myself and Steve earlier. Uh, remark. Indicated that he would uh, be willing to help out on a, whether it be a temporary. Or longer term. Uh, type of situation. And on a contract basis. Which is better than having no I T. Wanted to run that by the commission. I think Steve and Joan Kramer is the individual's name, gonna work on some numbers. And Steve's gonna get him all the users and machines and different things like that. Joan's familiar with our facility to an extent, he's helped out on some of the. Bigger projects over the years. And he currently has a number of different contracts and clients. Um, one similar to ours, us would be Trail County. And Joe, his company is located on a park. A lot of things can be done remotely, but uh. When Blake hits the fan and you need somebody here to flip the switch or change something out, that becomes a problem. So I think Brian's been working on. Job descriptions and. Things like that.
I had, I had actually reached out to Steve to kind of help me clean, clean up that job description, so we're a little more familiar with. Maybe the softwares he works with and just in general, um, what his daily duties are. Um, asked him to get me a list of some of those, I mean, there's a lot of that housekeeping stuff that is not, you know, the. As duties applicable stuff, you know, like he sets up. Email addresses, you know, takes care of little things like that for when we hire new staff or we have issues with it, so. Um, I'm hoping we'll get that list from him real quick, so we kind of have that housekeeping list of stuff. Um, we'll get, get it out there and advertise and. I think, um, there was some discussion, Jeff and I were just throwing some things around is, you know, do we wanna keep this as an. I T G I S position, or do you, you know, do you wanna? Just an I T person and a G I, I mean, two separate individuals, so that's, I, I don't know if it's worth discussion, but um. It's something to think about when we're sitting here at this point.
I'm not sure how easy this position or positions are gonna be to fill. But I think it's two very important positions that we don't wanna be without. I do think that Steve would be willing to. Take on some of the G I S stuff remotely, um, from his new location. And of course that would be between his working hours, maybe after hours or weekends or stuff like that. Update parcels and. Make changes that way, uh, a lot of things remotely. So it wouldn't leave us completely hanging out to dry, kind of thing. And I think that at least temporarily that, that would work and. Certainly having a contractor, an I T consultant. A contract basis temporarily would be beneficial, um, so when. Steve walks out the door, we don't panic and. The lights go out and. And we have to do things by pen and paper again, so. I know one of the reasons why uh, the county went with somebody in-house and on staff was. That particular reason is, you know, when things go bad with I T. And you want somebody either local or in the building that can address the situation. Immediately. And there's a lot of day-to-day stuff, little things that, that you don't necessarily hear or see about. Because they just work. So. I don't know if they, we need to make decisions tonight, but. Uh, maybe give Brian a direction to go ahead and. Start the process of revamping the job descriptions for both the G I S and the I T. Maybe get started, at least advertising if the commission thinks that's warranted.
Do you have a feel for uh? How easy it's gonna be to find someone that can fill both of those roles? It seems.
It's so specialized.
Yeah.
My opinion, um, Blaine and I were talking though too, he's, he's, you know, he's thinking we might be surprised. You know, what kind of response we will get, um, when we advertise, it, it is such a specialized. Profession, the G I S part of it, obviously, I mean, there's I T people all over the place, so.
And the G I S is re- really. Eh, taken off last ten years, um. And I think Steve's done an incredible job with what we have, and I think we're, for a county our size, we're. Leaps and bounds ahead of other counties, um, so.
I think if you were building a brand-new program, it would be different, but there's something there, it's not like the individual. That would be coming in and building a program, Steve already had built a program, the website basically that's out there. It's gonna be maintaining more than anything. And it's my feeling to an I T person, if they're good at computers, it's probably gonna be. The positions to meet fit together. The, the base rate of forty-five thousand bringing someone in probably isn't gonna entice a lot of people, but I know like you and I is. You can, we have it in our, whatever we can start with, but that's step five, which is seventy thousand. And between that forty-five and seventy thousand, I don't think you probably have an issue, but that's my opinion, you know. Depending on the experience you get is pretty enough to. Fit the individual in, it's no different than always hiring a lawyer, you know, depending on. What the experience they have at the time.
Well, e- each. Each position is that. So it's total of ninety. Cause they're halftime positions, but he's half I T, half G I S, forty-five for one, forty-five for another. Isn't it?
No.
Yep.
Well.
Yeah.
Is it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And yeah, the overall salary that we have on there is split in half, obviously, but uh, the, the total. Wait, we were looking at the step scale for an I T, the I T G I S position and, um, like at step five was just over seventy, right? I recall.
The way I looked at it. You're not gonna pay an I T position forty-five thousand dollars for twenty hours a week, or G I S. Come on, let's be realistic here. I mean, I, I don't know what you guys are paying for your guy's I T, your guys' facilities, but we're at, we're not at ninety-two dollars just for an I T position.
That's why it's half and half.
Well, that's not the way it's wrote in. Well, it's, it's a two, it's two.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were talking about his, the, the overall salary, the total salary.
Yeah, together.
Together.
Yeah.
Together it was, the step five was at seventy.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, we're getting on the same page. But yeah, I understand it's split in half when you're assigning the, the two whatever department or G L account. In, in theory, it does feel that the, it's two positions that can. You know, that work together, you know.
Basically, you're making a full-time position.
Si- si- similar, but really different. You, you know, when you start talking networking and things like that, it gets a little more different than. The G I S portion of it. Yeah.
So we just need, you know, what, what's the agreement on and how we wanna start advertising this as a co- combined position or?
Is half? Halftime I T, is that realistic? I mean. I, I know how many people work where I work and how many computers there are. One person couldn't do it full-time, there's two full-time now.
Well, well, it, it depends on whether or not that new I T would take on social services. And if that's something, no, not at all.
No.
Not even.
Nope. They're state, they go through energy.
I don't think we should add duties to it, I mean. He was doing both positions, I mean, why are we gonna add duties to it? Well, she just said we're not going to, right?
No, Jeff just said we'd be adding.
Yeah, but she's, Candy said that, that. Health, that's a state.
Social services.
Social services is a state thing, so. I guess I don't know why we would. Advertise it as one full-time job with the two descriptions, you know.
Two separate descriptions?
Yeah, because, you know, Sheriff Lang is, you know. His job description is broken down into percentages of time.
And that would be the, this job description, yes, it's very, it'd be the same, it's, you know, this percentage of time in the G I S, this percentage of time in the I T.
Put some fancy new title on there and just combine two, so it's one.
And that's what we have right now, as a description, so.
I guess I didn't realize.
I. I think if you asked.
Depends on the date.
Yeah, I think if you asked, um, Steve, I'm gonna guess the majority of. The time, if you looked at a timeframe, a majority, it's G I S. Than the I T, but that's just my guess. And maybe it's closer to fifty-fifty, but.
Yeah, I, I, I guess if we're looking for, give you a. Someplace to go definitely, get with him, so you get the. The little things that are in there, in that job description, so we don't lose them, you know, just by attrition. Um, and then advertise the job as, you know, it's. I guess I'm not sure why we're. Having two different budget items, I mean, can't we combine those into just one?
I'm sure we could.
Hey, just. I think I'm assuming one position came and then the other one came, so that's why it's.
Yeah.
I, Bo Whisper did my hear a, a good idea, call it a technology coordinator.
There you go.
With two different job descriptions.
Yeah, you know, cause like I said, you know, there's several different, you know, like emergency managers, seventy percent this and.
Mm-hmm.
Cent that and, and that way it's less confusing for everybody. But I, Jeff, you're on the right track, where we need something to fill in the gaps there, so we don't create a canyon to fall into it and. Having somebody to have to come in and reinvent the wheel, I, I definitely think we need. To hire.
Keep maintaining what we have.
Right, we need a bridge from one person to the next person, absolutely. They can reach out to Steve, cause I'm sure he's gonna have passwords on this and that. Well, just.
Yeah, but you don't share passwords.
Yeah, well, he's gonna have to get him in to change.
He's listening to the twice.
I know.
So, so, so it helps we, we do that, we, we. Give Brian the okay to go ahead and start advertising that, coming up with the job description that, to advertise for. And in the meantime, we'll work out, uh, ask.
Contracts.
Contracts with. For I T support and G I S support. And um, re- on a contractual basis.
How long before you think we advertise a position?
I'd like to get it out easily by the end of the week, just to make sure, and, and we have to advertise for at least ten days, um, so. And then our intel filled. Hopefully, if we got a pool. Hopefully, if we got a pool of applicants. Qualified applicants.
Right.
So.
Just remember timelines on the paper.
Should, hey?
Oh.
Should we adjust that title to technology coordinator?
I believe so, yeah, I mean, I, you know.
It does not make sense to everybody, yeah, call it a technology coordinator with the two different job descriptions.
Yep.
Right.
Right.
Oh.
So you need all that in motion? I mean, this and then looking for some, a contract.
Let, let, should we add, how about? You want two different motions? One for the job, job posting?
Uh, yeah, let's do two.
Okay.
So I'll move that we. Take the two positions that we have now, create a technology.
Coordinator.
Or coordinator. Um. Give Brian the authority to. Combine the job descriptions and get that advertised.
And technically, they are, they already combined in one, so it's, it'll just be fine-tuning some of the words. Yeah, it's.
We have a motion in a second to go ahead and. Post a position for technology coordinator. Allowing Brian to come up with the job descriptions. Yeah. Anything else within that motion?
No, I think that's probably.
I do have a question before you vote on it. I know once upon a time GIS was housed under the tax director. Like. A long time ago.
Yep.
Is it now considered? Steve is his own department, he doesn't have a direct report other than a commissioner?
Correct.
It's been that way for. Long, long time.
It was that way since day one. Like it's never been under any other department.
Okay.
He was housed in that office.
Housed, but not supervised.
But not supervised.
Okay, and that's my understanding.
Yeah.
Their job description does have supervisor as. Um, county commissioners, board of county commissioners.
Okay, and that's what I was wondering about is if that would need to get cleaned up, but it sounds like a non-issue.
Further discussion? On the motion to create and post the. Position for a technology coordinator. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And then a motion to allow for contractual. Agreements with. Do we wanna wait until we get some numbers to see what it's gonna cost, or just go ahead and allow for? Contractual agreements to be. On a temporary basis.
I don't think you can go without the IT part of it, the GIS could maybe simmer if it. Had to for a little bit, but I don't think we can go without IT.
And I think he kind of understood that we were.
Yeah.
You know?
Eh, eh, and Joe wasn't committing a, a price, we weren't committing a, an agreement. Um, he's gonna get with Steve and get all the particulars on. The number of users, the hardware, the different. Um, particulars that.
And now we're gonna do it month by month?
Um. Probably a longer, like a quarter.
Yep.
Um. You know, he doesn't do an hourly deal, he does a yearly or. He said some counties like to do quarterly.
Quarterly. Yep.
Yeah, I would say quarter, because if you all of a sudden do a year, you're gonna have two people getting.
Right. So.
Quarterly would also allow for a new person.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Well, I think you might have a double up until.
A little. Which that won't hurt.
Yeah.
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 So should we just ask for, um, a contract? From remar, can? For IT support?
I'll make the motion, I'll ask for a contract for IT support for, at least court, start with court.
Are we gonna pursue the GIS? Is that? Like, support?
I wanna have Steve do GIS until position is filled. And the transition is taking place.
I would say because if you, if you don't, you're gonna be.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have.
You're gonna be that much further behind.
Even do a quarter with him, if he's.
That's what I was gonna suggest is, is have a, you know, some kinda contract with him, that he's gonna bring. The new person up to speed in that same quarter. Have a contract with both of them, you know, I mean.
When it comes closer to.
And as far as.
You can decide if we need some more.
Hiring that person, you know, if they have to come in. At goofy hours to match up with what Steve can do, then that's. Be part of the negotiation, I guess, for the hiring processes that. In order to get up to speed, it has to be, you know, maybe some evenings or.
Mm-hmm.
And who's to say you might get lucky in someone that hasn't experienced that?
Yep.
We don't go down till we start.
And Steve had mentioned his, you know, he's, he'll still have a house here that he's gonna be trying to sell, so he says, I foresee myself. Coming back to Devil's Lake, you know, on occasion, so.
Every three days, my grass.
So, what, was there a motion made or?
I'll make that motion too. Bring on both for a quarter.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to go ahead and allow temporary. IT and GIS. Uh, contracting. Uh, on a quarterly basis. Um, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Brian. Yeah, thank you. Visitors and delegations. Crickets. Any announcements anybody has to make?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna be out of state next Tuesday, I'm going to Indiana, so. If you need me. Call my office and they'll deal with you, otherwise. I'm gonna be. County delegation checking out that new LEC. Model.
Thank you. LEC, uh, nine-one-one, board meets tomorrow morning. At the LEC, uh, courtroom. The only announcement that I would have. Um. Joint Board, uh, Devil's Lake Joint Board, uh, meets Thursday morning. In the historic courtroom, if anybody cares to join us, we meet at eight.
You're gonna get the employer of the, make a comment?
Yes. Who, um. North Dakota Association of County Commissioners is doing county tours. They will be. In Ramsey County, August fourteenth. And at three, three o'clock. And generally, it's the officers, the executive officers of. North Dakota Association of Counties, the Association of Counties, uh, staff, join them and tour counties. And, uh, would like to meet with as many departments. And commissioners and tour the facility. Like to show them, show them off and. We know that. The building is always spit-shined to begin with, so not a whole lot of extra work to go into that, but. And then the North Dakota Fallen Heroes, a quick announcement on that, I will be doing a. Uh, dedication of that monument on August ninth. Uh, I think that's a Friday at ten-thirty in the morning, in front of the memorial. North Central Granite will be placing the monument out there and. Uh, cost for that, uh, monument and. The cost for North Central Granite will be covered by the Veteran Service Organizations, the American Legion. Uh, Veterans of Foreign Wars, uh, will be covering those costs and we. Uh, graciously donated the space and some landscaping around that once it's finished, so.
And Lunch DePaulo.
And Lunch DePaulo at the F W, I believe. Is how that's all gonna work, so. I think, uh. Should be a very. Honorable thing that we're. Doing, and so, August ninth, anybody wants to join, feel free to do so. Other announcements?
Next week meeting.
Next week meeting? And probably have to have another meeting. In between now and the next meeting in August, to finish up these budgets. We have a few people that'll be gone on the twenty-third. So.
About Wednesday or?
Twenty-fourth through twenty-five?
Wi- Wednesday works better for me if it.
Twenty-fourth should work for me.
Late afternoon work better?
That would work better for me.
Four o'clock on the twenty-fourth? Work? Will that work for you, Candy? Okay. We'll make it work. Okay, we'll finish up with. Political subs.
Anyone else who's?
Any other departments? And, uh, on that day, so. July twenty-fourth at four PM. Anything else for the good of the order? Hearing none? Meeting adjourned.